All right, seeing that it's seven o'clock, we'll open the meeting of June 4th, 2018. Let's see, starting with our agenda. Well, let's go for the minutes for May 18th, 2015. Anybody see any changes, deletions, additions, or corrections? I read it over quick, I didn't find any. Then, nobody? I'll detain a motion to accept the minutes of Monday, May 18th, 2015.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of May 18th, 2015, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And get that folder one of them out of the way. And then, minutes of Monday, May 7th, 2018. Anybody find any changes, deletions, additions, or corrections? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes for the...
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of Monday, May 7th, 2018.
In a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes four, zero, one, two, three, four, five, zero, zero. Good stuff. Done. Correspondence. Let's hit that. A letter from Brooks and DeRennis, update. Land Court, Civil Action. Town of Halifax versus the Zoning Board of Appeals. Alana, we got that one? The letter from...
Yep, you should have that. Oh, I'm sorry, it's in the mail.
Oh, here we go.
There you go.
Robert Gaynor, Town of Halifax, Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear Chairman and Board Members, please consider following to be an updating reference to the above entitled action. Since our last report at the request of counsel for the plaintiff and the counsel for the co-defendant, we attended a court-ordered status conference on the motion to stay this case due to the possibility of a town warrant article allowing for the use of the subject property as previously permitted, which is under appeal. Parentheses. That option was discussed with the court. However, given that there is no assurance that the town warrant article passed during the upcoming town meeting, the court scheduled this matter for a final pre-trial conference on June 15th, 2018. Pursuant to the court order, the parties are to draft and file a status report with the court concerning the town meeting vote on or before June 4th, 2018. In the event that the town warrant article does not pass, the parties are required to file a comprehensive joint final pre-trial submission with the court. On that document has been drafted as necessary and agreed upon, we will forward a copy to you for your files. Should the final pre-trial conference go forward, we expect that the court will schedule a trial date for this case as the filing of a motion for summary judgment might reveal disputed issues of material fact. Parentheses, particularly as they are concerned to the use which the parcel is put during the mudfest events. End of parentheses, and thus would not result in a disposition before trial. Currently await the results of the town meeting. We understand it is to take place on May 14th, 2018. In the interim, should we have any questions regarding the foregoing? Please do not hesitate to contact me. Kimberly Salon. Brooks and DeRennis. Okay, done. Invitation from the Old Carney Planning Council, 51st Annual Meeting and Reception, Tuesday, June 5th. That's would be tomorrow. Anybody interested? Guest speaker is Senator Walter Timmeltie, Massachusetts State Senator. Just let us know. Letter from the Building Inspector. Zoning Enforcement Officer to Lawrence and Joy Marville, 16 Cedar Street. Neglect of Property Deemed Unsafe. I thought I saw it rob around here somewhere. Dear Mr. Marville, this letter is to inform you that after a meeting on May 8th, 2018, coordination with the Fire Department, Board of Health member Alan Diaz, and the Wiring Inspector Stephen Peterson, it has been determined that the accessory structure located at the front of the property at 16 Cedar Street has been deemed unsafe. Due to the apparent years of neglect, Walter infiltration, and structural deficiencies, the structure has multiple areas of collapse and is not weather tight. Under 780 CMAs 51R 116 of the Building Code, you are notified... You are being notified in writing that the structure shall not be entered or used until made safe and secured as per 780 CMAs 51R 116.2. Any use or construction shall not be allowed unless permitted through this office. You have the right to appeal this notice in order to the State Building Code Appeals Board pursuant to 280 CMAs 51R 113 and Mass. General Law, Chapter 143, Section 100, within 45 days after the service of this notice upon you. Thank you, Robert Picarelli, Inspector of Buildings/ Zoning Enforcement Officer. This was dated... Or received May 16th, 2018. It had just been notified. All right. Seven, 10. What else do we have? Notice of a couple of Form As from the Planning Board. Subject, Form A, Distribution Map 79 Lots 60 and 68. 60 and 68, that would be 179 Thompson Street, I believe. Plan is here, we can look at that, however, for review. We also have a memo from the Planning Board, a Form A approved for 178 Franklin Street, dated May 18th, 2018. Form A, Distribution Map 113 Lots 3 and 5. Approved by the Planning Board at their May 17th meeting. Area is zoned residential. And then, we also have memo from the Planning Board, the Final Site Plan for Pope's Tavern. From the Planning Board, dated May 18th, 2018. Subject, Final Site Plan for Pope's Tavern. Please see the final site plan which was approved by the Planning Board at their May 17th, 2018 meeting. This is for the addition and the interior renovation of Pope's Tavern for the Council on Aging located at 506 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Copies are available to the Planning Board in the Town Clerk's Office. All right. We also have a memo here from Selectmen's Assistant for the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen at its meeting held on Tuesday, May 22nd. The Halifax Board of Selectmen reorganized as follows. Chairman is Kim R. Roy. Vice Chairman is Troy E. Garren. And the Clerk is Thomas Millius. If you have any questions, please contact our office. Pam McSherry, Selectmen's Assistant. We also have a memo dated 5/24/18 to the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals from Charlie Sealy, Town Administrator, regarding the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. While I have heard verbally from Gordon Andrews and Daniel Bosari that each are interested in serving on the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, the Board of Selectmen at its meeting on May 22nd asked me to contact both the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals another time to check if any other members of either boards were interested in serving. The Selectmen ask for a written response in time for the Selectmen's meeting on June 12th. You're still good, Dan?
I gave them a letter.
Oh, okay. Anybody else interested in that?
How often are you meeting? Do you know?
No.
I'm interested.
I'm going in blind.
Yeah, right. Do you know? I don't know.
Probably know it that often.
Okay, yeah. I'm interested. I'll send them the letter.
Yeah?
By the 12th, yeah.
It'd be a consensus if it noticed when we meet.
Okay. Alana, can you submit Peter's name for that also, please?
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you.
Did you want me to send something here, or are you gonna...
I can do it, too.
Okay.
Would you want to give them a heads up? That's awesome.
All right, good. All right, seeing that it's 7:12, we'll open the... Our first meeting regarding petition number 793, Thomas and Mary Ann Shurekian. I'd really butcher that one. 73 Hemlock Lane, an in-law renewal. Is that you, sir?
Yes.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Shurekian.
It wasn't too close, yeah. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public meeting on Monday, June 4th, 2018, at 7:10 PM, in meeting room number one of the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass., to renew special permit, petition number 793, granted to Thomas and Mary Ann Shurekian for the use of the already existing in-law apartment at 73 Hemlock Lane, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned and is shown on the Assessors' map, 62 Lot 5D. This renewal is for use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the Town of Halifax under Sections 167, 7D. 12 area is zoned residential. Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals. Hi, how are you? You filled out the form. You answered, corrected that nothing's changed, the owner continue to occupy as the principal residence?
Correct.
Or the in-law? The principal residence and the in-law apartment continue to share major utilities as stated in the original decision letter? You said, yes. And there have been no other changes made to the in-law apartment since the last renewal and/or to the original granting of the original special permit? And persons are related to the owner occupants of the existing single-family dwelling is related by blood or marriage. Okay. Anybody have any questions, concerns, questions for the applicant? Okay, I'll accept a motion regarding the renewal of petition 793, to renew the special permit.
I'll make a motion to renew the special permit for an in-law apartment for... Was the article again?
The... Petition number 793?
793, as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Voting on this will be Mr. Casaya, Peter Priscilla, Jerry, and Dan, and myself. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Five to zero. All right, good. You can check with Alana in the Town Clerk's Office as far as the process to record that and make sure. You can give them a call.
Okay.
That'll be all set.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Didn't even hurt. All right, let's move on. We're flying. 7:15, petition number 8... What's that?
Right on time.
Oh. Petition number 877, Tao Mai and Haid Pham, 395 Plymouth Street, Special Permit Authorizing Existing Six Apartment Use. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 4th, 2018, at 7:15, in meeting room number one of the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass., on the application by Tao Mai Haid Pham to continue, extend, and alter under 167, 8A, B, and C, existing apartments, multifamily dwelling, parentheses, Special Permit Number 14, from 1968, from four dwelling units to six dwelling units located at 395 Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Tao and Mai Pham of 15 Mount Vernon Street, Dorchester, Mass., as shown on Assessors' map, lots 73-1B and 73-15A and 73-15. Title reference, Book 48346, page 206. The applicant seek to continue and extend the use of their original special permit of four dwelling units on lots 73-1B by combining lots 73-1B and lot 73-15, thereby enlarging the 29,300 square foot lot to 43,100 square feet. Area is zoned residential. Petition 877. And who will be speaking to this, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Attorney Lee Altiere, and I represent the Palms in this matter.
Okay.
And I would note, the notice, for reasons I don't understand, omits one of the three owners of the current owners of the property, and that would be the father of the two named people. That would be Hip Palm. He is Hip Palm. He is the also owner. I thought I made that clear on the application. I double-checked and...
So who do we have again?
It's Hip Palm, Tao... I pronounce it Tao Palm, and...
That's M-A-I, or T-H?
T-H-A-O.
A-O, okay.
And then, Mi, M-I-E. There are three owners.
M-I-E or M-A-I? Application has M-A-I.
All three are on it.
All three are on it.
Yeah.
Not on the public... Not on the...
Yep. One, two, three.
Okay. Oh, we're listed the owners by the title reference. The title... The title reference, Hip is also an owner of the property.
Okay. It is on the application. And it is on...
I don't consider that...
Do we have the correct spelling? No? We'll have to make sure we do have the correct spelling. Is it M-A-I or M-I-E?
It's correct on the application.
M-A-I?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And? Yes, sir?
Yes. I have prepared a written submission, and I would like to explain the situation as And if you want an additional copy for the file...
Sure. Why don't you give it to the building inspector if he has them?
The properties that we are considering, the Hamps originally acquired this property in 2013. Title was originally taken by Mr. Palm and two of his daughters, Mi and Chow. In 19... 2017, Chow effectively conveyed her interest in the property to his third daughter, Tao, T-H-A-O. So currently, it is Hip, Mia, and Chow. But they have... The family has owned the property since 2013. They acquired the property in 2013 from a trustee of a trust that had been established by the longtime owners of the property, Richard and Barbara Harrison. They... This property consists of two separate parcels. 73 Lot 1B, which is the property located at 395 Plymouth Street, which is the site of the building which is at issue in this application. They also can own, convey to their daughter as trustee, and ultimately to the Palms in The profit... A estate lot, adjoining estate lot that lies behind the 73-1B. Those lots are 73-15 and 73-15A. That parcel is an estate lot under your bylaws, containing 50 feet of independent frontage on Plymouth Street, and before we reconfigured the boundaries in excess of 120,000 square feet of land. Lot 1B contained in excess of 15... Excuse me. Of 150 feet of frontage and 29,300 square feet of land. That's the lot on which the structure is located. The Harrisons acquired Lot 1B in 1965. 1968, they applied for and obtained a special permit to convert the then-existing building on that property from a two-family, one-office use to a four-family use. Special permit was granted. Notice that a special permit of variance affecting the property was recorded in 1968... No, 1969, January 1969. But the recorded notice did not specify the particular type of relief that had been provided to the Harrisons at that time. After they acquired that special permit, they picked up the back lot in 1972. So the back lot, what I call the estate lot, and the multiple-family lot have effectively been under common ownership since approximately 1972. The Harrisons died. They resided at that property until the time of their death. I think Barbara... No, the husband, Richard, pre-deceased her. Richard died in 2009. Barbara shortly thereafter, at which point the trustee of the trust they had established sold the property to the Palms via public auction that occurred on or about November 15th of 2013. The advertisements for the public auction indicated that the building on the primary building was a six-family structure. Mr. Palm inspected the property prior to the auction, and it was, in fact, a six-family structure. We have... Like, we provided you with filed copies of the floor plan of that property. That was the condition of the property in 2013. And by physical observation, and by the age of the kitchen cabinets located in the property, the age of the bathrooms, we estimate that it had been in that configuration as a six-family for substantially at least 20 years prior to 2013. That's an educated guess. We have not been able to verify with any precision exactly when it became a six unit, but it has been a substantial period of time. My clients purchased the property. In 2016, the septic system failed, and they were required to install a new septic system. Board of Health investigated the property and determined that the new system would have to provide sufficient capacity to service 16 bedrooms. I'm not quite sure how they got to that figure. It seems a little high to me. But that's the figure that they derived at based on their inspection of the property. And that was the system, septic system, that was installed in 2016, 2017, at a cost of In February... On February 22nd, the Building Inspector issued to my clients an order, Cease and Desist Order asserting that the six-family use of the property was not legal, that it exceeded the scope of the special permit that had been issued in 1968, which only authorized four units. He's correct. I mean, that is a true statement. That's all that that special permit authorized. However, when my clients purchased it, they believed in good faith that it in fact was a six-family, and it by all appearances had been a six-family for a significant number of years prior to 2013. They also proceeded in good faith to install a septic system sufficient to support the six-family. The septic system, again, it will service 16 bedrooms. The existing configuration of that building is, there are two apartments on the... Facing the building from Plymouth Street. There are two apartments on the left-hand side of the building, each containing two bedrooms. There are two apartments in the middle of the building, each containing two bedrooms. There is an apartment attached to the rear of the building that has one bedroom in it. And then, there is a large, almost the equivalent of a single-family residential home at the far end of the property, which is right now not being used, has not been used since 2013 because it needs substantial work. But it could probably accommodate five bedrooms. It is that large. So that... I add that up, and I come up with about nine or 12. I think the other... Some of the difference was that the Harrisons, in addition to putting in two illegal apartments in 299, 399 building, also constructed a pool house in the back of Lot 1B. They put in a swimming pool and a pool house. Apparently, no... I'm not sure any building permit ever even issued for the pool house, but they converted that to a two-bedroom apartment, which is where they apparently actually lived until the time that they died, and rented out the remainder of the house. We are here asking for a special permit to authorize and legitimize the existing six-family use of the property. We are doing so. We believe you have the authority to do so. I would point out, your public notice, I think you read that the Lot 1B is in the residential zone. It is not. It is in the business zone. Business zone cuts about... Line is about 300 feet north from Plymouth Street. For approximately 300 feet, it is business zone. Then it becomes agricultural. It's not a matter of any significance because in both the residential and in the business zone, you are authorized by special permit to authorize multiple family uses. So distinction will have a real difference, I believe. Oh, I should point out, if you've ever driven by the property, you'll observe that there is a large paved parking area between Plymouth Street and the primary structure that supplies parking spaces well in excess of the number of parking spaces required to support a six-family use, substantially more, I'd say twice as many as your bylaw provides. We're asking for the special permit because we do not want to have to go through the, obviously, the cost and the expense of having to reconfigure that building to convert it back to a four-family. I would suggest to you that if we were forced to do that, I think we'd probably end up with about the same number of bedrooms that exists right now. They would complete the work on the main structure, the largest portion of the building which is currently vacant. That would probably generate four to five bedrooms in that unit. And reconfiguring the existing five smaller apartments from what they presently are, two, four, six, seven bedrooms, and those units would probably result in three bedroom units. So there would be nine bedrooms, and the septic system would obviously support it. So we have parking which supports the six-family use. We have a septic system which clearly supports the proposed six-family use. And the six-family use has been ongoing for... Of that building, as far as we can determine. We have no precise information, but our intuition and everything that we have been able to learn about it suggests that it's been going on for at least 20 years. Test for a special permit is, will the granting of the special permit? Can it be done without any negative or detrimental impact on the existing or future character of the neighborhood? Obviously, it's no detriment to the existing character of the neighborhood. It's been used as a six-family for a long time. As for its future use, again, I would suggest that, excuse me, if forced to convert it back to a four... back to a four-family, you would end up with the equivalent number of bedrooms. There'd be no real change, no real impact on the neighborhood or on the town in any meaningful or tangible way that I can discern. So those are the basic facts of this case. Now, one of the things that we have done is we do, we realized two things when this problem was presented to me. I read the zoning bylaw as requiring that, contrary to what the zoning bylaw may have been in nineteen sixty-eight, common bylaw requires that any multiple-family use to lot must have a minimum of forty thousand square feet. For that reason, we have reconfigured the boundary lines between the front multiple-family lot and the rear estate lot to increase the lot size of the front from twenty-nine thousand, three hundred to forty-three thousand, one hundred. We still have more than the eighty, we have not adversely affected the validity of the estate lot because the estate lot had a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, and only eighty thousand square feet is required to support an estate lot. So we have a surplus, and we have dedicated a substantial portion of that surplus to bring lot one B up to a conforming size of greater than forty thousand square feet. We have also been told, the head advisor, they've been told by the fire department that if in fact it is recognized as a lawful six-family under the existing state fire code, he would be, they would be required to install a sprinkler system in the property, and they are prepared to do so. If, if you grant the special permit they have requested, we have no problem putting on a condition that they be required within one year to either install that sprinkler system or convert the property back to a four-family. Right now, it is, in terms of its actual use, it's laid out now as a six-family, the large, the largest portion of it, as I mentioned before, hasn't been rented since two thousand and thirteen. The Palms have been waiting to get the funds. They need to do a major renovation. That particular part of the property was in pretty rough shape. Since the building inspector's letters, one of the tenants, the tenant who occupies the apartment on the back side of the property, has vacated, and they have not-
The pool house?
No, the pool house separate.
Separate, okay.
This is an apartment, the pool house, we've not addressed here, we got, they also were told to get rid of the tenants in the pool house they have. The pool house is vacant. But one of the existing six apartments of, of the five apartments that were occupied on February twenty-second is now vacant. They have not re-made any effort to re-rent it. They are pending your decision on this petition. So that, that's a summary of what's contained in my-
Okay.
-in my letter, and I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
I personally like to hear from Mr. Piccarelli, if we, we could, the building inspector. Rob, if you'd like to shed some light on this, please?
Yeah, well, pretty much what he's read is, is pretty much the event as, as it's happened. They are in the process of going to the planning board to get an A and R to change the lot size from twenty-nine thousand to forty-five, forty-five thousand.
Has that been done? Have they voted on that yet?
They have not voted on it.
We anticipate, I, unfortunately, because of the vacation, and I took to Italy, and I didn't get back until the evening of the sixteenth. Didn't anticipate what jet lag does to a seventy-year-old body. I never got out of bed the next day, never mind to the planning board hearing. It, I, has been reported to me that it was not approved at that hearing because one or more of the members had a concern because if you look closely at the plan, you will see that this main, this building, the building we're talking about, encroaches slightly over the lot line onto the property.
Rob, do you have a plan? I don't even, we don't have a plan with our application or anything.
I thought I submitted it. I, I-
This is the division of land.
Here.
Hold on, hold on. Yes, go ahead.
All right, so this was the existing lot. And this, there were three lots in question. This is lot fifteen A. This is where the six-family is, and then this is the additional retreat lot here. So what they're intending to do is divide that into this new parcel here.
Divide what?
Add that on?
Yeah, take, take this parcel here from this parcel, add it to here.
So they have the-
So that they have forty-three thousand and change, leaving this lot here, and they're gonna combine, you are gonna combine this lot with that?
Yes, that will now, yes.
This is part of this?
That's disappearing. That will be disappearing. So there'll be just two lots when we get done.
Right, so I, I won't speak for the planning board. There's a member from the planning board here, but I'll, I'll put in my two cents. There were some, I believe there were some issues as far as the A and R was presented, that it didn't meet all the requirements of two thirty-five, six F. We don't show the easement as far as where that would be for the septic system, and there were some other issues that needed to be addressed as far as that was concerned. But the planning board member, can, if you'd like to speak to-
I didn't know about any questions about an easement.
So the septic system is gonna be on lot fifteen? It's not gonna, it's not located at-
At the present time, no, there aren't, the problem we ran into is we did not want to create, reconfigure these parcels in any way that created a zoning infraction. This building, there's a fifty-foot setback required from the, for this building. So we have temporarily located a line there in order to conform with that fifty-foot setback. My, my strong suspicion is, when the Palms get around to making a determination of what they want to do with that back lot, that building will be raised. That problem will go away, and we'll reconfigure then the lines again to get that in. Alternately, if that building proves to be of some value or vitality, and they decide to sell it to a third party, they will sell it, but obviously, at that point in time, they will reserve an easement for the benefit of the remaining land to maintain the septic system.
But to date, that hasn't been approved or?
No, they haven't approved the A and R. And that would be, again, that's going to be an issue if they're going to approve this, in my opinion, there would need to be an easement shown on this to approve this A and R.
The problem is, is technically, you can't, if you own both parcels, you cannot grant yourself an easement. That's the technical problem. That's why we haven't done it at this time, because you can't grant an easement on a portion of your property benefiting other land on your property. It's a highly technical matter. I also, at least from conferring with the engineer for Outback, I cannot say I've researched the issue exactly. There's nothing in the Board of Health regulations or the state, state sanitary code that prevents you from having a septic system located on one lot servicing another lot. So I didn't, I know, I, I, the secretary indicated that there was a concern about this encroachment, and they were writing to the building inspector for an opinion on that. That's not an issue. I think the building inspector, the town council will so inform them. I know that the meeting is scheduled for now, for the seventh. I'm gonna be appearing before the planning board the seventh. You wanna continue this hearing to just, to find out what the planning board does? I certainly have no objection or report back.
Just as a note to, Mr. Chairman, you did read the three letters that I sent out to the fam, yeah? Okay, so this, this was the building in question that was condemned?
I was unaware of that.
Okay, yep.
Although I'm not-
It's gonna be condemned?
No, it's condemned. It's, there's X's on it now from the fire chief. The Apollo was cut to it.
When was, when did that occur?
Uh, in November sometime, I believe.
Okay, that's fine. That, that will speed up.
Yeah, it's, it's in disrepair, it's falling down, the walls are falling.
I, I, that's why I indicated that I think the final decision will be made to simply raise that building, that it's not worth saving, and you're, you're kind of confirming my suspicions. I took a very quick look at it. I didn't go inside, so I don't know how bad it is.
Now, once you put that onto a forty thousand square feet, and you're gonna sell that lot to somebody else?
I don't know what their long-term plans are. At some point in time, it's a-
But say they sell it to somebody else, and the septic system is on the other, on the other piece of property?
At, at the time of the sale, then we would certainly-
Yeah, you'd have to move that septic system.
No, we would reserve an easement.
You would have to reserve an easement for that?
Then we could, because it'd be separate ownership. We could create-
I'm just wondering what's gonna happen.
Either the building will be raised, in which case we'll readjust the lot line and simply be done with the problem. Or if, if we determine that the building in fact can be salvaged, and it's gonna be sold with that building standing, at that point, we would create the easement.
So that building right now is, is gone, it's condemned?
Yeah, well, it's condemned, it's not gone, it's still sticking there.
It's condemned, but it's-
Yes, correct. It's still physically there.
So, in my, in my understanding, that the configuration of this lot as it stands was, and I think you've confirmed that, was to maintain this fifty-foot setback.
Correct.
But a better configuration of this lot would probably to be shoot these lines straight back, if we could.
Absolutely.
Get everything on, on the same lot. You could bring it back to the, the line between commercial and residential, and it would be a better shaped lot.
I would much prefer that. I, I was, I wasn't around when they located the septic system. I don't think anybody was looking at this issue at all. I think the septic system probably could have been moved down further. I don't know if there were perk problems, if, if there were technical reasons that it had to go there.
Is this, is this part of this, this lot too?
No.
No, no, that's, that's separate ownership.
This is the encroachment where this, this-
Okay, that's what I was wondering about, looking at, yeah.
I've seen three plans that were prepared of this property over the years. The Harrisons commissioned a number. They were not recorded, however. Those plans didn't show the encroachment. I was kind of surprised when Outback came back showing it, but I have no reason to question their survey work. I'm assuming it encroaches. The encroachment has existed. That building has been there clearly since nineteen sixty-five because special permit was granted in nineteen sixty-eight. So it, while it's a title problem, my clients own it, if, to the extent it encroaches, they , they obviously own the encroaching area by adverse possession at this point. I do not consider that to be a zoning issue, however, and it's not, it's not a legitimate reason.
Well, if I may interject on that, I'm not willing to say one way or the other, if that's true or not, because as far as the structure's concerned, you know, I can't, and I think you would agree, trace back to when certain parts of that structure were built or not built. I mean, I, you know, if we're putting a twenty-year timeframe on that, I'm not willing to say that that-
I, I think if you were to pull the old case from nineteen sixty-eight, you-
The same structure?
Same structure.
How did they get clean title then, when they bought it?
Well, whether it's the same structure-
A survey, that, on what, on this?
When they bought it in two thousand and thirteen.
I don't believe, I don't think anybody did an instrument, according to the recorded plan, that, that there is no encroachment. The only other plan that, there was a plan on record of this property. It didn't show an encroachment. This survey does, though we have due surveys. I'm assuming, for the sake of argument, that this survey is accurate. We hired them, I agree. But we, we were rushing to get this Form A plan in, in order to get this process moving, so I did not have time to stop and second-guess it or to look into it further. As I say, it may be technically a title problem, but it's not a zoning problem. The only thing in a Form A, the only real consideration in a Form A plan, as I read the law, and I think the law is quite clear, is to determine whether or not the proposed parcels have the minimum frontage required under the zoning bylaw, and that that frontage is real and not illusionary. If, 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 if the frontage is all on wetlands, and you can't cross the wetlands, and then a Form A plan can be denied on the basis that the, while the frontage exists on a plan, it is illusionary and does not exist on the ground. That's all, the Form A review is rather limited and circumspect, and the possibility of other possible zoning infractions are, are questions, are not a legitimate reason for denying any Form A plan. And I'm quite confident the town council will so advise the planning board, and that this will be approved on the seventh, when we, when we go before them. But again, if you have a problem or an issue with that, I have no problem continuing this hearing until we hear from the-
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do we know what part of the structure actually, is it, is it a porch? Is it, is it part of the building?
No, that would be the, that'd be a sidewalk.
That's sidewalk of the, the structure itself?
Of the structure itself, yeah.
That's the main house.
That's the big, this is the bigs, that when I refer to the, the big section that-
Where the five bedrooms are.
Yeah, that's that end of the building. This is the little rear, kind of rear apartment that comes in and gobbles up some of the second. There were two in this-
And where was the pool house?
This is the pool house.
Okay.
And again, Bob, did you, was, was it, did you ever discover a building permit for that pool house?
The pool house has a building permit.
Oh, it did have it?
For, for a pool structure only.
Okay, and then they converted?
I don't know what size the permit was for and what's existing there now.
Okay.
So I'd have to look a little bit more in detail, see if I can-
But they did at least pull a building permit.
Best of my recollection is a building permit for a portion of that pool house.
For a portion, okay. I think the Harrisons were a kind of outlaws myself, I have that sense.
So what about the sprinkler system now? When, if, if this lot is added, they'll have enough square footage for?
Well, the fact that it's a six-family, because it's a new, you know, again, we're looking at it as a new six-family, there's, the special permit was for a four-family. So now they're coming in and they're requesting for a six-family. So now they're bumping it up, so it would require, you know, any, any kind of life safety issues as far as the building, building, the fire code.
And we don't have, we don't have a problem.
Right, I understand, I understand. And in fact, they, they did hire an architect. I have been in touch with the architect. He's kind of been put on hold. He's willing to work with us, but this obviously needed to be taken care of first.
How about some input from the planning board?
Well, Woodnemours, chairman of the planning board, we had some questions about it. You're right about signing an A and R plan. We were well aware of that. But we have a few questions. If you were there, we probably could have taken care of it.
I think you would have caught me off guard anyway, with my jet leg. I'm not sure how articulate I might have been.
But one of the questions was, you know, if you're going forward and, and cutting this out and adding to this lot, you know, the septic system doesn't end up on the same lot. So that was one of the questions, why, why that happened.
That was the setback.
And I, I understand the setback for the fifty-foot retreat lot. The, the other question, I mean, you know, you know, it does encroach on the other property there. Is there any thought of eliminating that encroachment?
No, I would, if, if, if the neighbors were to push it, and if we, and again, there are other surveys which-
Yeah.
I, I would simply bring an action for adverse possession. That encroachment has existed openly, notoriously, and continuously for twenty years and all that. It would be, it would be a slam dunk. I mean, there really is no issue on that. The law of adverse possession is well-established and-
What other concerns do they have?
Well, you know, as far as myself goes, you know, you're asking for a six-family, you've got, you know, twenty-nine thousand square feet there, you, you're gonna push that to forty thousand? A bylaw requires forty thousand for each family, for each apartment, not just for multi-family?
I, I disagree. I didn't read the bylaws back.
Well, that's what it is.
I, I believe that a multi-family dwelling can go on forty thousand square feet. That's the way I interpret it. It was based back from nineteen sixty-six, when the zoning law was first enacted. You could have a multi-family dwelling on fifteen thousand square feet. That's why that was approved at twenty-nine thousand square feet. In nineteen sixty-seven, that law changed that any structure being built on a lot would have to be the same as any other lot in town for a multi-family dwelling. So I read it as forty thousand for a multi-family dwelling, not a multi-family developer.
Okay, so it's a multi-family dwelling, but yet now we're under the new bylaw, if you're saying that, and you have to have forty thousand square feet, and you would not get six families in that.
They have their proposing forty-three thousand square feet for a multi-family dwelling.
So what you're saying is, anybody that wants to put a multi-family dwelling up right now with forty thousand square feet can come before the zoning board, get a special permit, and put a six-family in.
I think if the zoning board talks to town council and asks that question, they can make that determination on their own.
And, and I do think that, that this is a unique situation. We're dealing with an existing structure, not- not not something new. I would, I would.
Yeah, but the application basically is new, because if you're going from four-family to six, it's a new application. I I agree with Gordon that.
It was it was granted as a multifamily dwelling, meeting the requirements of fifteen thousand square feet nineteen sixty-six, nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen sixty-six. Bylaw read multifamily dwelling in a business zone is allowed on fifteen thousand square feet.
But now coming up to two thousand eighteen, and we go by the bylaws today.
Which is, again, a multifamily dwelling.
Is forty thousand or is forty thousand per unit?
I think you should talk to town council to get that. This is just my opinion on on the research that I've done. But I would I would ask town council what their opinion is on that.
Because that will really change the outlook of the town. And I would just say that, you know, if you're gonna go ahead and grant this, I would, I wouldn't want you to be granting this on the basis that, you know, somebody went ahead and illegally made six apartments and then comes back for relief because they made six, but they had four. You know what I mean?
They got a permit for four, but they had six.
Before, then they illegally made six, and then come back and say, well, we got six, so now we need a special permit for six.
And again, my suggestion is, again, I'm I'm just saying my opinion as far as how I was reading the bylaw, how it started in sixty-six and came forward. Any opinion from me is going to be, you get approval from the planning board, and anything that you are gonna approve, you talk to town council. That's my opinion.
So what what we're saying is they grandfathered in for four, no matter what?
They have a special permit for four.
So that's grandfathered in, so four, no matter what.
Yes.
Now, at the time of the purchase in two thousand thirteen,
Right.
did they get a certificate of compliance? Did the town give them a certificate of compliance for?
I I they, no, I mean.
That would be their due diligence to do that.
I can, they had a title search done. The lawyer did not pick up the issue. That's not unusual. This happens more often than we think. I've been, there are a number of reported cases.
So at the time of the purchase, the town did not come in and say, yes, the six apartments, yes, they mean.
Oh, no, 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 but the assessors assessed it as six. It was assessed at six. It appeared to be six. My clients assumed it was a lawful.
But they did buy it at auction.
They did buy it at an auction.
One of the things at auction is you're buying.
I know, you don't, you, you know, it's unfortunate, and I just wanna, and I'm not trying to be critical of anybody at all. These things happen. My clients, perhaps they could have been more diligent. Perhaps their closing attorney could have been more diligent and discovered this error. Fact is, is the town itself, this guy converted this, put in two illegal apartments, and nobody caught him. He must have been very good at what he does. I don't know how he did it. I don't, these things happen. But diligence from the town would have discovered the problem, and my clients are just the ones holding the bag for an unfortunate situation. As to the suggestion that that if they in fact had done the illegal conversion, they could come in and ask you to ratify their own wrongful conduct, I would not be standing here suggesting to you that you should. They're innocent. Perhaps some small measure of carelessness, if you wish to look into that. I'm not gonna get into an argument about it. I would only point out is there was some carelessness other places as well. We're dealing with a situation. The building is there. It's going to be used for multiple family use. As I suggested in my original statement and as I repeat in my letter, I see very little difference between the impact on the town between this building being used as a six-family as opposed to being used as a four-family, because if.
Well, I don't know. I agree with Mr. Gordon, with Gordon Andrews, that that basically we're legitimizing an illegal apartments is what we're doing. It's been applied for four. The fact that, I mean, I'm sure the building permit itself didn't say four-family and hope we don't get caught for six, you know, who you, it's it's, you're obligated to comply with with zoning. And I don't know, you, I don't see you personally or or them, but.
Everyone.
Huh?
Everyone.
Yes. What's the, what's the remedy as far as the planning board's concerned? I mean, what are they thinking as far as the application that's been submitted? Like you said, there was a couple of questions that if.
We, the planning board just talked about the A and R plan that came before us.
Right.
The the other comments were from me. We weren't, we weren't discussing their.
No, no, no. No, I mean, as far as the lot, you know.
I, you know, it just seems strange that it didn't include the septic system, you know. And I understand what he's saying. They were trying to hold a setback. I kind of thought that the building in the back, because I've seen the X's on it, was in in the works to be just wiped out. So I didn't really consider.
If I had had more time, it might have been, but we were, we were, we were operating under somewhat of a deadline because the building inspector required that we file something. In fact, he gave me a thirty-day extension to get the A and R plan prepared and filed, but we didn't have time to consider all of the options. If the building is an issue, my clients may very well be more than happy to tear it down. I don't know how bad a condition it is in, apparently.
No, it's, it was condemned.
Okay.
I'm not saying it can't be repaired. And if you look at my notice, it was condemned with them having to come for, show me how they're gonna repair it, get an architect involved, the whole deal. I'm not saying they can't repair it, but in its current state, it's condemned.
Yeah, as far as the planning board goes, and we know, when we get an A and R, there's very little reason that you can turn it down. You know, I mean, they're adding to something that's already there. They're bringing it up to forty thousand square foot lot, so I mean, it's not. Not that they're gonna get a denial for an A and R.
I mean, we're gonna move, let the planning board move forward. The building's gonna be condemned, and they have to include the septic system with with this, with the slot. Might as well do it all at once. Include the whole thing. Go through the motions. Include the septic system with that lot. Then tear down that building and reconfigure that lot. Include the septic system on that lot.
Well, this lot is gone.
No. Where the septic system is right now, you have to include that onto that lot.
In other words, extend, take this square footage and add it on to the deck, yeah?
And that 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 building has to go in.
I I actually considered as an alternate, just preparing the A and R plan and just marking this building, building to be raised and not, and to be raised. And that would also solve, that that might very well solve the issue. It will be raised at some point in time. I just can't get out there and do it tomorrow, obviously.
What are these two buildings?
Those are two other old buildings.
Other buildings.
These are in fact.
They were chicken coops.
Is that what they were?
Yeah, I can't tell you what they were. They're just.
They were chicken coops.
I think it was all agricultural buildings at one time.
They were at at one time, instead of owning the whole thing, they were chicken coops.
Yeah.
It seems like we, until they do anything, we can't vote on anything regardless. And I think it's probably a pretty good idea to try and get an answer on that forty thousand square foot answer, because we can't, clearly doing anything tonight. And it, you know, that that hasn't been changed, so I think there's a lot of issues with it, but as it is, we can't vote on that.
If you want to continue the hearing.
Well, that's, that would be the the two choices, either continue it or or withdraw without prejudice until it, till it's, you know, a complete application.
Get an answer from.
Are are they in compliance with the special permit now? I mean, I don't know what's.
Has really no language other than.
It's four, four apartments and a storefront or something?
Two apartments and a storefront into four, four dwellings.
There are only, there are only four dwellings currently being occupied.
You were saying, two, two people left, or one was empty and one was left.
They weren't evicted. They just vacated. They decided they wanted to move on, and there's been no effort to re-lease it, so. Right now, there are only four units occupied.
And they're all in the main house?
The two on this end, and there's two in the middle, and you've got the floor plan somewhere.
And this is the spot that's empty.
That one, that one's empty.
Well, what is the pleasure of the board? It could be better that, you know, we vote to continue it or withdraw until we have a complete application and a summary from from.
Continuance is how long?
With me, Thursday.
I'll give you as much time as you want, as you feel you need, and extend the time for taking action to the extent that's necessary.
I want to be cleaner for a new, a new permit to come in, a new article to come in here, because you're gonna have to be changes to that. We can't do anything the way it looks right now.
Oh, I think you could. You you, it it is.
Yeah, but you're you're back to where you're saying, you know, years before they did this, they did that, and it's all hearsay. So this is the same thing. If we don't have something permanent to look at, then we can't, we can't approve it.
The approval of the A and R plan only is only is a certification, a very limited certification from the planning board, is that the lots, both of the proposed lots have the minimum frontage required under the zoning bylaw, and both clearly do. The approval of an A and R plan, and there's clear case law on this, is not endorsement of any other zoning violations that might exist, because number one, the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction to determine whether or not a zoning bylaw violation does exist. So the A and R approval is very limited in terms of its scope. Now, we may very well, I mean, I can meet with my clients and talk with the engineer. If they decide they're ready to go ahead and just give up the ghost and tear that building down, I'll submit a new A and R plan, showing that building gone, and and again, just reconfiguring the lot lines. Again, you can have multiple A and R plans.
I mean, we either vote on it at twenty-nine thousand square feet, and I would have to vote no on that.
Of course, not.
Right, we can't do that. Or or we have to continue it or withdraw us. I mean, I, you know, I don't know if that's what he wants to do, so I think we have to. Yeah, and in the meantime, we can kind of find an answer to that, because I'm not sure what the answer is to that either.
What do you think, Dan? Continue it or or withdraw? Or vote on it? We could vote on it.
I mean, yeah, we could deny it, I guess.
I think they need to go back and redo this. So what are we talking about? What's the best way to do that? I don't know. Continue it? Because I think that's the way to do it, thirty days?
Let's do a thirty-day conven- uh, uh, continuance. In the meantime, we'll get a ruling from that. Everything else is back from the plan, from the water health and everything too. Everything else is all done with them.
Yes, the system, that system was put in back in nineteen, in two thousand seventeen. As built was filed. They've checked off on it.
So we're all on the same page. So what we're talking about is raising that building and changing the lot lines?
It's something that I will discuss with my client. It's a possibility.
But you'll come back with something that should be.
How do we straighten out the encroachment here with the three point two feet?
That's not something that I can do in the short run. The encroachment is there. I would, I would indicate that we claim title to any area of encroachment by adverse possession. And the law on adverse possession is pretty clear in Massachusetts. If you have maintained a structure openly, notoriously, and continuously.
Right. Okay, does the, do I have a motion on whether we can allow the thirty-day continuance? I think in the meantime, too, it would be advantageous to our board to find out from town council if if in fact, you know, the interpretation exactly how this works or is going to work or not going to work. All right, I'll I'll entertain a, well, first of all, we'd need a a letter from you seeing that a thirty-day continuance of the application would be acceptable by your clients and the, on that application.
Well, I would, I would formally request a concurrence for thirty days.
This was, what was it, twenty-four?
When should we just say four now?
It could be over thirty days.
What's that?
More than thirty days.
Yeah, well, are we within ninety days, right?
You have a total of ninety. I'll give you an extension.
I think we're within that regardless.
Oh, you're well, the thirty days wouldn't even get up to.
Our next meeting is the ninth, so if we, the ninth of July, so I think we'll be within July twenty-four.
Oh, absolutely. You'll be within the ninety days. If you need an extension of the nineties, that I, that I would.
On the ninth, we might have to continue.
Then I would give you a written.
What I'd really do is just continue this until the next, until our next meeting.
In the process.
And that is gonna be, that's July ninth?
And if you could include any further extension to the ninety-day limitation would would certainly be agreeable to you and your, your clients. I don't know, what is it?
What do you mean?
Alana, when is that next meeting?
July ninth.
You guys are meeting this Thursday. Yeah, so planning meets this week, so they have this everyone.
Yeah, well, that's good. They meet Thursdays, right? Yeah, they'd actually have two meetings if you if you had to.
Looks like it, yeah?
Yeah, actually, three.
Anything else? Would you like to add or delete? All right, so I'll accept a motion for regarding the, continue to our next meeting regarding petition number.
What is the number?
Eight seventy-seven.
Eight seventy-seven.
I'll make a motion to continue petition number eight seventy-seven until July ninth.
I'll second.
For our next meeting.
And further clarification from town council?
And and to get further clarification on town council on the required acreage for multifamilies.
Dwellings.
Dwellings.
I'll second.
So there's a, a motion and second regarding the petition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And can you also put a note also that do we accept the request in writing from, from the attorney?
Thank you very much.
Bingo. Thank you. Thanks, Gordon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
On the town, I'd be the.
How come we didn't have plans?
See, I have a problem with the, if we're into the town, you know, does the town know? Does the assessors know there were six apartments there?
Well, that's the thing. If they're assessing it at six, then where are they getting the six from?
But if they know that, I'm gonna have a real problem taking it away from them. I I don't know. I wanna find that out. If I have a problem, if if they were being assessed for six apartments, attached to six apartments, right? I would have a problem taking it away from them. But if the town didn't know about it anywhere in the town, you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? It's like.
Well, this is inside the thing, so it's a communal.
I left off at five twenty-nine eighteen. Copy the letter from NGM Insurance Company, the town of Halifax. Halifax Trail Wellness Cancellation. And here's a copy of a fair notice of cancellation, agent two oh one 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 two. Please read carefully. Regarding Halifax Trails, Inc., the principal caregiver, Paul Keating, Clearwater, Florida. Okay, here's our copy.
Well, they're moving, they're moving on with it, or they're just?
I don't know how much moving they can do when they have the bonds canceled.
I know.
Call me crazy. Letter from Brooks and Renus, scheduled date for oral argument, Land Court. Civil action number seventeen, M I S C zero 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 five oh seven, Gordon C. Andrews versus member of the zoning board of appeals, and Rob Picarelli. The only reason I'm, I'm hesitant to read is. The only reason I'm, I'm hesitant to read, it says right on the top, privileged document, attorney work product. I don't know if I should be reading this at a public hearing.
Let's skip it until next meeting.
Oh. Did you, that's what it says, privileged document right at the top, you know? As you may recall, the plaintiff filed a motion for summary judgment, which we opposed and for which we requested disposition on behalf of the board on the building inspector Piccarelli pursuant to Massachusetts rules of civil procedure 56B, 56C. Previously, we forwarded copies to you of those pleadings. After initial round of further motions and court order filings, this corresponds as to inform you that the court scheduled oral argument on those various motions and oppositions for June 6, 2018. We will inform you once they are appraised that the court's determinations are sent concerning those motions. In the interim, should you have any questions regarding the foregoing, please do not hesitate to contact me, Kimberly Salant. Thank you. All right. I think, what do we have? One bill, you said?
Yeah.
Here we go.
It's in the van.
It's for the, it's for the advertising in the, in the hoosie. We're good. Any other, uh, new business or anything, gentlemen? Yeah, we can go on. Okay, I'm all set.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.